Let's say stay as part of this.
Good evening everyone, welcome to the special meeting of the Ingrid Eclipse Mayor and Councilor. Today is February nineteenth twenty twenty six, time is now seven nineteen. I call this meeting to order. Uh please all stand up and let's have a let's all together. Okay, Mister B A would you read about the open statement, public open statement?
Bob, do you have a copy of the uh the agenda?
Do you need?
I think the main agenda. What the statement complies?
Yeah, that's just the.
Yeah, matter right here.
This meeting was called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act P L nineteen seventy my nineteen seventy five, chapter two thirty one. Notice of this special meeting was sent to the Star Ledger, the Record and the Herald on February seventeen twenty twenty six, subject to the forty eight hour transmittal requirement posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building and has remained continuously posted as required notices under the statute. Copies of the above mentioned notice are available to the public and on file in the office of the municipal clerk. The mm th- this special meeting is called to address the items set forth in the agenda below.
Thank you Mister B A, uh now next the roll call please.
On roll call, uh Councilwoman Bagatz, Councilman Liang, Councilman Park, I mean Councilman Patel,
Yes.
Councilman Kapsakis,
Yes.
Councilman Lee,
Yes.
Councilman Kachubis.
Yes.
For the record, Mayor Mark Park is in attendance along with Borough Attorney Robert Ferraro and Borough Administrator myself.
Okay, thank you, and for the public information, we are currently holding tonight's meeting in a hybrid format. We have people in person and via Zoom, there is also live stream on YouTube, YouTube. If our wifi at the council chambers has an issue where the Zoom meeting drops, we will aim to retrieve the connection to continue the meeting. Thank you, and then uh next item is we gonna to get the close session first, I need the motion and second.
Motion.
Okay, so all in paper?
Yes.
Okay.
This is a this is to um enter into a detective session to discuss matters pertaining to pending litigation. Do we have a motion and a second?
Yeah, yeah, we did that.
Yeah.
They saw on paper.
All in paper.
All in paper, thank you, alright.
Okay.
So w- when we come out, the the council may take action on any of the mi- i- items on the agenda and any other items that may be uh as a result of the closed session.
I have to do something. He's on the phone. Councilwoman, just give me like two seconds, alright, I'll be right over. No, don't start without me.
The lines from Mr. Paz, rawr. That's what I like. No, he had darker hair.
But it's gonna be young.
Dark hair.
Yeah, picture there. Yeah, they do photo shot, C G I.
Oh, that's good stuff, yeah.
No, that's that's on the parrot truck, I'm on the west side of the path.
Yeah, right, 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 right. Oh, you went to Schindl? Yeah.
Right. Oh, yeah.
You go to the flats? One of your sleeves one time with the pipe band, the birdie Irish pipe band, because they were competing in a ten two. And always. There must have been a whole song. His father played nine hundred seasons. I mean, probably. And his father played nine hundred seasons. And then his like best friend and then worked for him, he's baseball. And all around, he's a cyber player. Well, he can. He can hit cyber, so that's.
Gotta make sure you're ready. Hey, how do you how do you think he's gonna do if I bring Dino to the table? No, but this guy's an animal, bro. Shut up. That guy did his whole career. A very fire man, very nice, he's a lot of.
U two was he? Uh, I remember that. As well. A lot more. That must have been quite a bit of a best. Everybody saw it, everybody's. Some, every single song. He said it was the same, same flavors, everything. The difference was everybody hears a new all hits. And some all hits, they didn't know all songs, like everybody, every song, every word, it was crazy. That was really, really good, it was like they closed off ten blocks around stadium, so it was like a open air, like pedestrian wall, like pretend. But everybody, it's never been the so. Yeah, 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 she was so funny. She was great, yeah, she was great. Really, great. She was great. Yeah. Broke the white hair, broke, like you won't like that if you say broke.
The broke.
He says, he says when you're when you're in, when you're in Ireland. English. So it was like an insult. Say, yeah, where he's from, he's from Ireland. They're very subtle.
I'd always want to.
To the beach.
Yeah.
Oh my gosh, one of your. It's on the Atlantic, so now I've seen the sunset on the Pacific and I have now seen the sunset on the Atlantic. Big, that dune back. And then we went inside and that was like the best day, we didn't stay there, we just went there for dinner. We were, we were done with the reggae carry, we went there and had dinner.
That uh golf resort, I always wanted to go there.
But I stayed there, he's been there three times.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's amazing, it's.
Yeah. That's my credit card's worth.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, so it's all on like like half the holes are on the Atlantic.
It's all like cliffs.
And the wind is like. Yeah. It's beautiful.
He's literally used an entire Costco sized bag of. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I hit the Kirkland, Kirkland's are good. They actually got sued by Tylos because they were saying these hobby, they're bad. Everyone needs a manufacturer. Make those, yeah, just put our brand on. Go to Costco, April, walk in front door, big display, and you get like. Yo, man, sleeves of all, so like twenty three dollars.
Well, we're doing that.
It's evil. So once the guy's stupid eyes. That's correct, yeah, brand new Pro B. Some said water, you have to tell them. Especially if you're losing balls.
You have jelly ready?
Yeah.
They've been in it.
They're not, they're not in that.
Oh, oh, it's still.
No, they're not just in a little old house.
But now they're down by race.
Yeah.
They're great. Sorry, of course.
Okay.
Your mom?
Yeah, River Valley. It was right next to my.
Yeah.
You think.
Could be frustrating.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was good to see. Cause that little thing just stopped in this, out of the shadows. Full.
Oh, for sure. Oh, yeah. Some of the furniture here and there, you know, they have those.
Yeah.
Well, after. Where was he? So, they're not gonna all down together? It's not a big deal. You guys did that with a key?
I definitely did. I was. Everything. Sir. Oh, we love fire. We've seen your city. And we'll be out there. Oh, we got. I did. I saw the guy here. I know. Trying to. That's when he entered here. Have to get out. I don't think that was. No.
What, what, what? All right. This is. Oh, this is right.
Down by. By the stuff. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
She's.
Watch, watch that. Of course. Oh, mom, mom. He's.
Siggy mile?
Oh, that. Yeah. So he's sitting. Yes. Well, I'm canceled. It's why. The hitch was like. Don't do this. I mean, it's not. It's a walk right now. I think. I think. As soon as he did the cabbages. We were gonna flash his lights. So. He needs to drop him down to the same. If he go. As soon as he got back. And the phone. He flashed the lights again. And he tagged up. It kept doing, it kept doing. Buddy, get out of here. Are you on it? It's. That's my standard.
Oh, that's great. You're good.
Take the style away.
All the stuff.
Should we? Shadow.
Yeah.
It's like this. Uh.
Stop, stop.
Behind. I was like. Do you? Why something should be. They're. Where's that bike? How many times itself say like? We do. No. I'm not. But.
Yeah.
Guys, uh, they should. Okay. Issues to take. Uh. It's. It's what she tell. It's.
The.
Covid case.
Oh. Yeah, it's old school, but it's. But it's just different. Totally different now. You know, like.
David Stoltz. Chasing. Stolen ball. Cause. I was down behind. From this wall. Ranger Stoltz. Guy that sat across those rungs. He installed. There's a warning shot. It wasn't the power line. Knocked out the whole power. From this wall.
Well, I've never heard that. That's weird.
This one boss George. One of the Americans. George, earlier from that shift. Gets in pursuit. Chase the guy outside New York. Guy gets away. Comes back. We go through the break. At six in the morning or five in the morning, the guy worked his way back to Lakeview Cliffs. Went down to DPW, stole a DPW. Crashed out the, the, the gates. And they catch him out in like. Maybe like way out. But they got, but they got. But he.
The hitch ride back.
The guy.
Was he from the area? Like, why, why would you come here? You gotta.
Yes. So there's. It's. Oh, um. Oh, no, shoot, I got all the way up into. Can't walk anywhere. It's.
Right. You know, I. Far enough.
No, they pulled me off. I went chase them.
Yeah.
They pulled me off.
It was old age.
But just like the. Like, how did that happen? No, what? Yeah, like, how'd he get back to Lakeview Cliffs? Yeah, it was crazy. It was a hitch ride.
Right.
Yeah, it was, it was long way, no question.
Power line. No, I never had.
I've never heard that. George. See, I bet. That's great.
Those things. One, one day we were at, uh. I'm, I'm gonna sit down with power line. On. Middlesex. I was on middlesex, yes. So I sit there and wait. He come pull up the blue thunder. And he just gets out. He was bare hands. Grabs his high tension line and all like. And then. It's with you. Then what's he doing? Grab, he's got like a roll tape. I'm like, I just say, you go. You get out here, I'm on it. The hell's he doing?
Just gotta know.
Oh, my god. I was like, I was so freaked out. Like, he's gonna. Crazy. I'm like, what? What? Oh, geez. Oh, jeez. Almost feels like my little missile. I don't know. It must have sounded like.
Oh, okay.
Everybody's.
A ball in the. The ball in those whistles. No, I thought it might be. You didn't want it.
So the whole time. The glowing rivers on the bottom.
Yeah, yeah.
Stories of. Yeah. He was. I don't. Any.
Pledge allegiance to attendance, motion to go into executive session. They're in there, they're in there now. Forty minutes. Three, that's the. Passes. People. Second one is for passes. Titch. Titch. The key. It's.
That's the other one.
At the time. Michael Schur. Uh, he, uh, he just. Almost breaks. Frank, I can't get this. You get it? Oh, what you doing? You think mango?
They wonder. So wild. All the days. Everything. Everyone.
And. He wants to make some. To meet us. Here's his real name. It's not bitch.
Well, well, guys. Yes. I'm talking about the friend.
For the money. That one, his name is up there. I know. But he was there. He was there. And he was sitting there.
But he's.
Doesn't make sense. But he's.
But he's here.
They didn't change the connection. Cause the, uh. Administrator is running the computer.
But this is a photo.
Administrator. His work is. She's not here. She's.
So they didn't change the name, right?
No. Go fix it.
Yeah. Four and a half years. This is. Four and a half. I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, right?
Yeah. The kids are, the kids will be older.
Oh, okay.
But that's. Yeah. A lot of life. Come on.
It's a different world.
It is. Yeah.
A different world.
Yeah. Yeah. I told them.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're old.
Time. They don't care about you right now.
Yeah.
It's been a lot, lot time.
Right. Yeah. It's very. Sorry. We got. Check you.
Still. Still, the same thing. Well, you can't. Yeah. And he worked this. Oh, man. State laws. It's like. So. They're. That's why they're in the. Well, this is. Many of the laws. Like.
Right. Yeah.
Yes, this is hopefully just. Found out about. Oh, that's just. Oh, my. I guess I had a camera. Oh, yeah, exactly.
Uh, he's. He doesn't ask what. What they're both.
I'm, I'm here about the housing. Cause that was. That. Cause you know that they spray on. Fish, your house. Right.
Thank you.
Right. It's.
Yeah.
Washington. Sure. All these. All the laser. In Washington. South end. Middlesex, Charlotte Place. Tony Drive. I'm just close. And then a little bit up here by. Yeah.
Yeah.
All the laser. There's.
Stand up. We get a. We get something wrong here.
All the talent.
Please.
That's what we said years ago.
We get down there. Yeah. He loves this.
I know.
You know, they're taking over this.
I'll tell you. This, this, this. If they get this in place. It's based. I won't be around. Remember nineteen? So. We had that seesaw type. There you go, right? But it's.
Yeah. Yeah, so like decorative. Yeah.
Now here. All the thing.
I'll get it out of there. We'll vent it in with.
Right. Besides the fact that when I was schools. And schools. Are not prepared. Coming. At least to children.
Right. Oh, yes. Yeah. Yeah.
Probably can't.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, you know. Oh, yeah.
Each of. But you.
I never mastered. Uh, he was down like. Yeah. There's certain stories of them. It's just a massive.
Stories that were just.
Yeah. The character.
The blue book. Yeah, he's.
Yeah.
He was. My.
Yeah.
Okay. I was like, chicken, I think this is not. I just tell him. You know, when he felt that he carried around. Those gigantic guys. Baby.
That's for baby. What?
Nah.
He used to walk. He loves to surf. To see his mist. The only one time he gets there. Especially when it's late. She's like, no, I'm.
Well, I have all my, uh. Last year, I go. With the free. Met my. Just wanted to work out. And I talked to some people. They raised down. Having checks. And I get directly. So. But I'll.
You, you have to.
I didn't say that. And I got it. Yes, now this time. It's. Oh, he met.
Since he was young, he didn't realize. So Frank was like.
Ah, yeah.
Right.
I wanna see. And just one, please, let me just. Just. I'm just. People. I'm just. Say yes. Right there. Oh, P A S one. Six one. See, sure. Get that. P S A. Get. I don't know. My paper. More than six. File my. I want.
Story. Two, three, four.
Of best. Yeah. Cause you missed a year. Now you might have lost that. Day. Ever been off. What? Push them and knock across. And us. And he snaps. And, and he snaps. So turn them on. I mean, it takes. One. And I got a check already. I got a check this last week. That's. For one of those. Yeah, but, but the issue. I can say. We're gonna send, they're gonna send it four times a year. Quarterly. Instead of sending one check. Gonna get it quarterly. So I got one check ready. Twenty bucks. Now. But I'll get. One every quarter. It's a year. Work out here. Forty. I don't know. They can buy everything. About senior three. Stay in New Jersey and something else. Pretty. Like anybody, though. Be pushing on them. Frank, you know. Like that. But every now and then. Something. Or something.
Yeah.
Or if you. Have.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's like.
Oh.
Well, you almost. Counted. Yes.
No, okay.
I never got it. Last time. I was.
I understand. Uh. Yeah.
Frank is a trash. Show up.
Oh, you're showing.
It's. The show.
Oh, my god.
He had. Okay. Pretty.
I'm crazy. Show. We could. You guys.
You talk me now.
Right. He said. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Do you Jerry?
Well, that's what you want.
I'd be looking in that drinking already. I, I said. So. Yeah. It's like. Next. Spain.
Yeah. Um. More of the, more of the residents.
Right. Be a.
I. Frank. I. So Frank had this. Big tall person. No. So Frank. He had twenty bucks.
Yeah. Just like.
And yet. So. They're a little jolting. Okay, okay. He does it no problem. On his way home. He had to pull over. So. So now he's. He tells me that story. So you know how like. If I told you, don't think about it. It's. You know, sometimes.
Right. Yeah. Yeah.
So now it's. Frank. And he's about each. And all. So needless to say, like months.
Yeah. It hurt me that.
Cause I was at lunch. Yeah, I'm thinking about the woman up. Like, ah. And I, I just kept that note.
Yeah. Yeah.
If you want to say. God bless. He was before.
Yeah.
He was one of those guys that should give. What's. Oh, really? He just did. No. Says.
Did he? He's did his full time. Retired after all.
When I'm just.
Come.
Yeah. If you want to draw. Everything belongs. This.
Some said it doesn't save.
No, probably twenty. They're ready.
Yeah. Well, true.
Yeah.
And, uh. You know. What you say. But when the, uh. First they say.
The school. The teacher. Sometimes. Quick. Mark. Base. No. He was on. Yes, just come by the light. He says, no. Sorry. Bring the favor. Just give me a letter. Says. He can't do like.
Right.
So he does that. And then. Did he try to come back to the job? Or something? But just. And, and that's. One. And two, I'm just like.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I told first. I told Sean and Greg. Sean and Greg were like. The other one. Before. The main. Well, that's. That is. I know.
School.
I tried my best.
Yeah.
That's right. Bro.
Exactly. Legitimately. Like me. I'll tell you. Like. You said since. Yeah. Yeah. It's. Such a.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
I did. You know. Yeah. Of course. What is your method of. What they need to remember? He's. He's. He comes. So he's just. Two thousand and eight. Four days.
Yeah.
That's eighteen years. They say it just catches up. That's right, yeah. That's right, yeah, yeah. Yes. For most part, you're okay. It's it's. More just catches up. What year? You were on three. Three years. On. He was more away from his life. Not. Three different.
Yeah.
A girl staring at. Hopefully. Outside. Smoke works and yeah. They can't just.
Like you can't just have. Yes, that person. Who they are. Are you? They don't separate. It's like. Yeah, it's true. It's a video. That's why. They can just. It's like. Get opposite. And watch. It's. Two two. It's just not like. I'd love to have two soon. All that. And like that picture. We she gave her. That I. Eighty one. Uh, she had a couple of dogs.
Two years.
Yes.
Yeah.
And it was in. Did that. We had this one thought would die. Sort of like would you? And he did he did. It's not. Every certain point comes in. That's why it's supposed to. That's what seems. It's like. Gradually. But. Oh. Can't sit at the window.
Oh, yes. There's many. There's more than.
Well, people stop doing this or something. We're doing this.
I'm. I'm.
That if you know. We don't. To me.
In the state.
On.
Yes. It's not just. So.
Five car.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yes. Yes. That is. Yes.
I have. With that.
That look. That you walk up.
Everybody there. If the. The big slack. I know.
So you have to have. We need to. The way. It was. It's.
Yeah. Yeah. Probably. Much.
Nothing else exists.
It is instinctual engagement.
Yeah. Could have a conversation.
That's a good picture. I don't know why you have to say. To our. Big uh. I mean. Like I saw the pictures. Trouble of flames. I'm sorry. He's nice. Speed on. I like that. I like the. Look off.
Does your boy know? Yeah. I do.
Yeah. You say.
Who? Simple answers.
Oh, no.
Baseball. It's.
Sure. We go. It's.
And. You. And.
It's. That's your.
You were quite a person, babe.
Yeah.
Are we? It was like such a little picture. That's what that's what took him down. That's what took him down. Cut it. The C L took him down. No, that's why. Did imagine. So what their life.
He missed. Angel. Yeah.
Go down.
That 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 that.
Oh, it's like. Yeah. It's nice. Like I was something. As far as it's nice to see that. We suppose. Yeah.
But. It's. Yeah. Even like right now. Thanks, new boy. Recognize? Um. Like.
Not yet.
Show.
Yeah. You go to the front like.
Nah, starving. I'm not eating that, bro. Oh, wow, yeah, I heard about you. He's a big guy.
Bigger than you.
Huh? It's true.
Oh, my god.
Too massive. I don't know where that picture is from. Somebody took that. What's really? Yeah. Oh, fuck. I gotta go. I gotta get the picture. Alright.
Gotta go.
You gotta go, working. Not much anymore. Strong possibility. For making it up. I I smell. I can't. Yeah, we're we're coming half. I I that one. We got we got.
Thank you for coming.
Let's watch. Alright. See you later. Thank you for coming. Alright. We're. Driving back. Just joking with that.
You asshole.
He was a. He was like such a good, you know, such a good sport. Oh, I remember that day. It was so. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, the key. Nah, he he flushed up.
You should be back. Should have Jimmy Goff. Stack. Yes. I wonder what the. I don't know. It's a good bet.
Yeah, you could.
But. Yeah.
But. You can tell I can tell you this year. Uh, to hear from you. Uh, it's just.
Chad. Chad. Okay. Yeah. It's a key action. That's. Participate. Sure, it's okay. It's okay.
I'm asking you.
Yeah. Check up. Oh. Yeah. He was big. Yeah. Wow. For a guy his size, too, that's not that's very rare.
No.
Yeah. I never met him. Well, we've always talked about him. Giants. Wasn't Giants. Wait, what? Did they hire him or? What? Uh. But it wasn't. Did he ever find out? Was the member reporter? What's all that? Same words. Yeah. If you lose in touch. Yeah. He's got liquid. Uh, I.
Well, he's. I'm sure. I think he's. Yeah.
And he sent it back though. So like. Alvazquez. Like where's he where's he do that? This is. Base of warehouse? Oh, yeah. Alvazquez. Yeah. Even the Giants. Yeah. It's all this thing. Yeah. I wonder like what specifically. For like the straps on like the pants like. You know. I guess they give. Whether or not. The pants are obviously good.
Yeah.
Right. Right from just getting beat up. That's my.
We did all of course. Very. Fun. Okay. So he didn't have.
He's intel. Yeah.
Oh, he's sharp. Oh, okay. He's not here.
No.
I'm missing all my TV shows.
He could make it. Well, this one. It's hard. Yeah. Wow. Wow. That's awesome. Hope those. Oh, really? Yeah. What is what? What?
So by. Apple course. Prevalent.
That's on the future. Right.
I think. I see him every day. Has said this. I'm. Yeah. And it's also.
Yeah, but. If that's course. It's. Open unit. Right. Ah. Where? No, no. Okay. We haven't got. Notice that he's coming out. We haven't got. I don't. It's probably something like. Through. The. He has. Like that. But you had. So. Yeah.
That will be. I see.
Basically. Yeah.
Uh. Across the street.
But we have.
It's uh. I have. It's down. Yeah. In the beginning. You suppose. Yeah. Yeah, that's. So that's. But my. Seem. For. I don't think. Of what.
Well, uh.
Turns out.
Is.
Well, really something else. Very nice.
Yeah.
Oh, that's so funny.
Yeah. 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 He is. Yeah. It's funny. Yeah. Joe Zarrosi acting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes. Part. First. Alright. That's that. Yeah. Does it make a little bit of money? It's good? Oh. Oh, boy. Yeah. It's in a commission. Or if it's like on account. If somebody's like. Better if you charge. Since you're coming.
Oh, my. Yeah. Yeah. Good.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I'm like, okay. Maybe you are. It's just like.
So. Yeah.
I thought. Something's also. Just about the next. Oh, yeah. You have to get your phone. Oh, that's nice. Okay, I started. What was the?
Yeah. We go. Hey. We're up.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's interesting. Yeah. There's some spots. I'll see them. It's interesting. You're. I say that.
Gotta take a picture of the best looking place. Part of them out.
Smile. I almost.
Everybody smile.
Goodbye.
With you now. Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Mike, you guys should get in here, too. Get in here. Get in here. Get in here.
Really?
Shut. Yes. Get in here. Mike. Get in here.
I'm here.
I'm not asking here. Tell them to get. My hands are always steady, steady. Thank you, man. Hi, uh.
Okay, uh, I need a motion.
Wait, mayor, one second.
Uh.
I'm just gonna unpause it.
Okay. Okay. I need a motion and second to come out the closed session.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Motion by Councilman Patel, second by Councilman Liang.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. And then next item is, uh.
Public session.
Okay, public session. Uh, next, then there's public comment session. Anybody wanted to speak? It come out your name and town. Uh, your time is five minutes.
We need.
Uh, we need the motion.
A motion.
I I need motion to.
Second.
Okay.
Motion by Councilman Patel, second by Councilman Kapsakis. Roll call. On roll call, Councilman Bigatz.
Yes.
Councilman Liang.
Yes.
Councilman Patel.
Yes.
Councilman Kapsakis.
Yes.
Councilman Lee.
Yeah.
Councilman Katrivas.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Anybody wish to speak? Please come out.
We will start with the folks in the room. Um, if anybody wishes to be heard. Alright. Are you guys gonna do the same thing like by one person, but everybody together or one by one? Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, you just wanna probably turn on that mic and then go right ahead. Uh, for folks in Zoom, we're just gonna do the people in the room first and then we'll turn our attention over to the folks in Zoom. Hello.
I believe it's hot. I'm Lieutenant Gregory Romano, Anglo-Cliff Police Officers Association. Good evening, mayor and council. First, as a unit, we want to thank you for providing Captain Wicker's family with healthcare coverage stated in our contract. The matter was imminent and this will provide his loved ones with some peace during this difficult time. Further, we, the Anglo-Cliff Police Officers Association, are here to address assertion assertions made by Borough Administrator Chowry at the last council meeting regarding retiree healthcare contributions. Mr. Chowry stated that retirees have to contribute unless it is negotiated and has further claimed the borough has failed to follow state law, chapter seventy-eight, since two thousand eleven. These statements disregard both the legal record and the significant sacrifices made by the members of this unit. Contrary to the administrator's claims, these benefits were expressly negotiated. During the two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty-three contract negotiations, chapter seventy-eight was presented and addressed by both the borough and this bargaining unit. State-appointed mediator Anthony Bagliore assisted in resolving these matters by providing a framework to resolve the contract. To suggest now that these terms do not exist is to ignore the document history of our is to ignore the documented history of our collective bargaining unit. Retiree healthcare was not a gift. It was purchased. In every contract since two thousand eleven, our members have made painful concessions to preserve the healthcare clause. Administrator Chowry's position implies a staggering level of legal malpractice by past officials. If the borough has truly been in violation of law since two thousand eleven, is the administrator asserting that minimally Borough Attorney Joseph Marinello and Borough Labor Attorney Mark Rutterman, who both approved the previous contract, failed in their professional duties? Is he asserting that the previous council members who voted unanimously to approve these terms did so in violation of the law? There is a wealth of institutional knowledge within our unit with numerous members serving this borough for over twenty years. Furthermore, many past members of this council are prepared to sign an intent certification to confirm that the intent of these negotiations was always to preserve the healthcare benefits currently being challenged. We recognize that the current members of the council were not present for previous negotiations. As a result, you are receiving information from only one side. As a result, you are receiving information from only one side. We have been and still are willing to sit with you, provide our proof, and share the institutional knowledge that clarifies these agreements. The Borough expects this, the Borough expects its officers to honor their oath, and at the end of the bargain, and at the end their bargain. The officers expect the same from the Borough to do the same. We implore you to do the honorable thing, honor the contract. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and the next, Mary O'Shea? Okay, Mary?
Mary, wanna talk?
Mary wanna talk to?
You wanna talk about, uh?
Mary O'Shea, you're going up?
Yeah, Mary, come up, please.
Mary O'Shea, you don't have to state your address for the record, just your name.
Uh, Mary O'Shea, twelve Irving Avenue. Um, I'd like to know what the decision was made by this council regarding the overlay zones for the C and D zones. I'll comment on it after you tell me what you decided, but I don't know what you decided.
Oh, there's been no motion on it, the, it's on the agenda for tonight, so if you wanna comment on it.
Okay, um, this is the seventh, seventh time that I'm speaking about this. I spoke, addressed these items when the HESPA was first released and done in June, and I spoke at the council, I spoke at the planning board, I spoke to Councilman Katrubes in the conference room. I spoke at the previous council meeting, I spoke at the planning board meeting, I spoke at the, uh, um, the other, uh, planning board, um, meeting where we met with Mister Mestretta on Zoom and went over the overlay zones. It was very clear that we do not want mixed use in Zone C and D. Mixed use requires additional parking because the commercial space has different parking requirements than the residential spaces. So when you have commercial space, you have to provide more parking. We have water issues, and we have very, very high impervious coverage all through those zones currently. And we'd like to see the impervious coverage reduced so that the people downhill from those properties will get less water, that there'll be more green space that will absorb the water instead of macadam parking lots. And if you have mixed use, you are going to have more macadam in those spaces than you would have if you just had residential there. So I know you have two versions of the ordinances. One that was prepared after the mixed use was removed. The ordinance was redlined, and the planner removed the mixed use comments out of it. The next thing, we got another ordinance came out, and it had the mixed use back in. So I know tonight you have two ordinances, two options, two, two copies. One with mixed use and one without the mixed use, and I urge you all to vote for the one without the mixed use. Okay, this is gonna tie us up for ten years, I probably won't be here when that's over, but you have to think about the town, this, this, we don't need mixed use, this is gonna really hurt the infrastructure and for the residents that have water issues. Okay, and I'm telling you, I went through, I don't know, a cartridge, jumbo cartridge of ink, a couple packages of paper printing up the various, uh, ordinances and copies that, with the changes. Okay, it's very important not to have high coverage for the building and not to have high impervious. Okay, you, it's up to you people now, and you've got to do it, it's gonna come back to the planning board again, and if it comes back with the mixed use, might end up coming back to you again, because the planning board doesn't want mixed use, that was pretty consistent with the members. So you, you send it to the planning board for recommendations, and then when you get it back, you don't like the recommendations, or the planner doesn't like it. The planner really screwed stuff up and, and gave us maps with the, with the zones, uh, in the wrong places, with the wrong, the wrong, uh, numbers. The ordinances were wrong, okay, so I don't particularly care for what he has to say, alright? We will make our number without the mixed use. Three twenty-nine with the Chiotti property, which is in round four. So please, vote for the version two of the two ordinances, which does not have the mixed use, and then if you, if I can comment afterwards, I would like to know when you decide what the building coverage and what the impervious coverage is for Zone C and Zone D. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, next, please. Okay.
Hi, Detective Valerie March, we tell us. Over the years, I've seen a lot of money spent, for whatever reason here, it's been a lot, but it's, well, I understand these gentlemen who, uh, are looking for you to pay for a benefit they, they earned. It's my gift to them, in my mind, in my own opinion, they earned it. So whatever is necessary to pay for what even I understand was, uh, the negotiation on their part, and it was agreed upon. I, I really like getting all the information I need to understand what the issue is, but it seems to me like, uh, you find it hard to pay for a benefit for them, which, like you, like you said, every time they put on a uniform, we have a quiet town, but there's always somebody crazy out there willing to do something stupid. So it's something they earned, and, uh, I'm sure you can find a way to resolve the issue, uh, coming to some sort of agreement, because it's needed, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
No, please. Miss.
Okay, yes, come up, please.
I'm sorry? Uh, no, not right now.
Mister Ferraro, this is for you to pass out. May I? George? Thank you.
Thank you.
That will just be your, can you cover page? One, a huge task, it's a baby page document, and I didn't wanna, you know, take very much time, so it's just the one page I'm gonna be referencing within that decision. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Do you have one? Does anybody have one?
Yeah. Here. Just take mine.
Sorry, thank you.
No, no, thank you, thank you, pass it out. Sure.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Carol McMorrow, I presently live in Point Pleasant. I'm a former elected official in this town, having served from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twelve, and again from two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen, as well as a former Borough administrator. I'm also someone who was forced to defend my rights in court, and I did so successfully. I'm here tonight because I care deeply about this community and about the men and women who serve it. What I'm here to speak about tonight is police benefits, and those benefits are not a favor or a perk. They're a promise that this town made, and promises made to public servants must be honored. To understand why this matters, it's important to look at the factual history and the binding agreements that have governed police benefits in this town for decades. In two thousand and eleven, the Borough and the PBA were unable to reach a negotiated agreement. As required by law, the matter proceeded to interest arbitration. That process resulted in a binding arbitration award. That's a copy of what I gave all of you tonight, which established not only wages, but core terms and conditions of employment, including health benefits. The arbitrator's decision, in particularly instruct, was particularly instructive because it acknowledges Article Seven, Paragraph Two, which in the most recent contract is Article Six, and addresses the Borough's attempt to reduce or eliminate existing benefits. On pages sixty-nine to seventy, which all of you have, of that decision titled longevity, the arbitrator notes that the Borough proposed a substantial reduction in longevity for current members and the elimination of longevity for new hires. In the arbitrator's decision, he rejected that proposal for existing employees, stating, and I quote, "Given the relative financial stability of this community in conjunction with the potential negative impact on the continuity and stability of employment, I will not change the benefit for existing employees." Instead, the arbitrator instruct, restructured the longevity for new hires only. That structure was then incorporated into the two thousand nine through two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen through two thousand eighteen, and two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-three PBA contracts, and it has been reflected in every salary ordinance, some of which you voted on, since two thousand and eleven. The significance of this history is simple. The Borough previously attempted to reduce existing employee benefits. Their effort failed. The Borough appealed that decision, and they lost that appeal as well. Moving forward to the two thousand fourteen through two thousand eighteen collective bargaining agreement, the police negotiated significant concessions to preserve their full, one hundred percent post-retirement medical benefits. Among other things, they agreed to the elimination of the deputy chief position from the table of organization, resulting in fewer promotional opportunities. They gave up the ability to bank overtime. They earned overtime, they had to get paid the year that they paid it. They accepted a freeze on starting salaries for five years, and they agreed to lower their raises. Then again, in the two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-three negotiations, the officers again negotiated and gave back to maintain those same paid medical benefits after retirement, again preserving the status quo language reflected in that contract. Despite this clear and consistent history, Mister Chowry, statements have been made to the public suggesting that these benefits were never negotiated. I saw the tape, I've heard your statements, and that the law was not followed. And that the retirement resolutions were improperly adopted. I wanna be very clear. There are former council members, both Republicans and Democrats, who were present during these negotiations, who approved these agreements, and who remember exactly how and why those provisions were adopted. Councilman Liang, you are the council for one term, and Mayor Park, you are as well. These resolutions were reviewed by Borough and Labor councils, placed properly, on agendas, and adopted lawfully. I respectfully ask that the public record reflect the truth. These benefits were negotiated, the law was followed, and rewriting that history does a disservice, not only to the police officers who relied on these agreements, but to the integrity of the governing body, to all of you. We now find ourselves more than two years beyond the expiration of the two thousand nineteen to twenty-three PBA contract, with negotiations stalled over one central issue, deviating from the language in that contract of one hundred percent paid medical benefits after retirement. Let's be clear, this is not a matter of impossibility, it is a matter of policy choice. This council has the authority to negotiate retiring contributions at zero percent, just as the prior governing bodies did, with the advice and approval of their attorneys. The question is not whether it can be done, the question is whether this council chooses to honor the longstanding negotiated structure that officers have relied upon for decades. And if they choose not to make a change, at a minimum, they should, sorry about that, and if they choose not to and to make a change, at a minimum, they should reflect the prior arbitrator's decision when it comes to existing employees' benefits versus new hires. Um, just, just in closing, I, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the human reality behind the issue, um, that there appears to be an unusually high number of cancer diagnoses among both active and retired members of this department. One of those officers is Captain Keith Wicker. As we speak, Keith is gravely ill. And when I spoke to him just a few months ago, he did not talk about himself. He talked about his wife and children. He talked about making sure that they would not have to worry, and that the benefits that he negotiated and the benefits that he relied upon were secure. That is what these collective bargaining agreements represent. Not numbers, not percentages, not line items. They represent the peace of mind for families during their most vulnerable moments of their lives. This is not the moment to consider reducing or eliminating medical benefits. It is the moment to stand behind the commitments that were made. Our officers have dedicated their careers to protecting this community. The least this community can do is ensure that their health, safety, and long-term well-being are treated as a priority, and not as a line item to be reduced. I thank you all for your time and allowing me the ability to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Okay, next. Next, anyone want to speak? Okay, we'll get the.
We'll turn over to Zoom?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh. Just make sure, if anybody that is on Zoom that wishes to be heard, um, please unmute yourself or try to get our attention, um, and we'll go ahead and unmute you, and state your name, first and last name for the record, thank you. Oh, give me one second. Just make sure that.
Here, check it.
Go, go right ahead.
Hello?
Mrs. Geiger?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm going to speak about the zoning ordinances, um, an issue that I have followed for several years. As you will recall, in June of two thousand twenty-five, this council approved a HESPA plan. And that HESPA plan, because you were under, uh, strict timelines from the state, you approved it without, um, carefully reviewing the details of it, relying on Mister Mestretta. A, you also promised the public, as I've said, that a committee would be formed to review the details again, to review the draft ordinances, and to some, come, and to come to a conclusion, uh, when the submission was necessary by March fifteenth. Nothing happened, other than Mrs. O'Shea and myself talking, um, and repeatedly requesting that you reconsider, um, and open up a committee. Nothing happened until last week, when on February eleventh, um, at the mayor and council meeting, you, um, approved a, two new ordinances for zoning areas C and D. They had many improvements in them, they had no mixed use, they were approved. They were approved by scenic Hudson. They had no roof decks, they had improved setbacks, improved coverage issues. But there was still several concerns. Um, but mainly, the biggest difference between those ordinances and the ordinances that were initially approved, initially approved as draft, was the, was the taking out of mixed use from the ordinances. Now, mixed use took with it, it increased your numbers. I don't know how many of you realize that when you add mixed use and added bonus credits, you went beyond the three hundred and twenty-nine units that were required by the state. The increase of almost a hundred and eighty more residences in the community is not good for the community. It results in increased traffic down nine W. It results in increased traffic down the side streets. And most significantly, it impacts our schools in a way that is not necessary. We will have difficulties in the future meeting the requirements of three hundred and twenty-nine additional units, which you have to multiply by five in terms of the total number of residences. We do not need an additional one hundred and eighty units on top of that. That would be disastrous, and it's not necessary. That's the important thing to understand. Um, at the planning board meeting, which took place the next night, Mrs. Begat, councilwoman Begat was there, I was there, and Mary was there. And what we heard was no mixed use, once again. The only changes that were made were further improvements, and these were made by the planning board. They eliminated the standalone garages, which had been a concern, and the planning board also eliminated egress and ingress onto side streets. Mixed use was gone. It was not until today, today, when all of a sudden, resolution ordinances appeared that added mixed use back in. I urge you to not approve the new ordinances. Approve the ordinances that you approved last, last week with the embellishments recommended by the planning board, so we can move forward in this community, meet our affordable housing commitment as we're required to, and not add an increasing burden on our residents. Your job is to make sure that the ordinances that are passed meet the concerns of our residents while meeting our state obligations. There is no reason to add more to the mix and burden us more. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, if anybody wishes to be heard on Zoom, please unmute yourself. Um, otherwise, try to get our attention, I think it's star sixty-nine or something like that. Um, or unmute yourself. Okay. Uh, seeing none?
Okay.
Motion second to close.
Okay, I need a motion to close there.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay. And then what about Mr.?
We'll start with Mr. Mestretta?
Mr.? Okay.
Um, we have, um, Michael.
Oh, hello. I'm trying to get, uh, uh, can you hear me?
Is that, oh, Mr., oh, it's Mr. Geiger. Oh, hello. Mr. Geiger?
Hello.
Hello?
We cannot hear you.
Okay. No, Mr.? All right, um, I, I don't, I, okay. All right, Ms.?
Hello? Yes, I'm sorry. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm sorry, I had trouble manipulating my iPhone. I wanted to reiterate, uh, what's been said. The three hundred and twenty-nine number was a, was a calculation which is set forth in the HESPA report, which you adopted last June. I believe it's on page fifty. There's nothing incorrect about that calculation. It was very clear, what the components are quite clear. So it's, it's almost incredulous that Mr. Mestretta would take issue with his own numbers, if that's what he's in fact doing. Uh, as it's been mentioned, he deleted multi, multi-use construction, mixed-use construction. As he told mayor and council last week, as he told the planning board, he was commended for doing that. And I, the question has come up, is why is Mr. Mestretta, who, he indicated during both meetings, uh, with you and with planning board, that he's had some sort of, uh, in negotiations with the Fair Share Housing Center? And it's unclear for me whoever authorized him to have any negotiations whatsoever with that organization. He is working for the Borough of Engle Cliffs, he doesn't work for Fair Share. Uh, and it's my view that if the council were to proceed to enact ordinances which allow for mixed-use development, that would constitute the most egregious decision made in Engle Cliffs since the planning board rejected eight-hundred syllabus corporate application back in two thousand seventeen. So I urge you, as Mrs. O'Shea and Mrs. Geiger have implored you, to please enact the ordinances which do not include mixed-use development, so that we have the three hundred and eighty-nine, nothing more, three hundred and twenty-nine, nothing more, nothing more required. And, uh, make sure that you take into account as best you can, a future development in the community that best serves the interests of the residents. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Michael Mestra. Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Uh, uh, Mr. Mestra, just wait one moment while we, uh, just motion in second to, uh, close the, uh, public session.
You want to close?
We need a motion in second to close the public hearing?
Okay, uh, we did already.
We did?
Yes.
No, we didn't, we didn't get the motion, then Mr. Geiger came in.
Uh, okay, one more time.
Yeah, motion second.
And the second.
All right, motion by Councilman Liang, second by Councilman Kapsakis.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes. We'll start with, uh, Mr. Mestretta, our borough planner, before we turn it into, uh, turn it over to Bob Farah. Uh, Mr. Mestra, do you want to, uh, speak?
Sure, thank you.
Just speak up, sorry, but I can hear you in the room.
Okay, um, let me turn up my volume here. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah. Go ahead.
All right. Okay, um, first of all, for the record, I've had zero conversations, negotiations with Fair Share Housing Center. I do not contact them, have conversations with them, one-on-one. Um, I'm trying to remember the last time I've, I've had any conversations with Fair Share, and I'm having trouble even remembering that. Everything has gone through our borough attorney, and I'm sometimes copied on that, but I have no direct contract, uh, contact with Fair Share Housing Center, period. Two, number, in June twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five, the Borough Planning Board adopted their fourth round Housing Element Fair Share Plan. And that plan was later, it was approved by the planning board, it was endorsed by the council, it was sent down to the program in the DCA by the June thirtieth deadline. Over the summer, we received one challenge from Fair Share Housing Center. We successfully addressed that challenge, responded to that, and we, all of that has culminated in the adoption of a consent order at the last council meeting. We have met every deadline in the fourth round. The town has its immunity, the town has a fourth round plan that's been approved and supported by this council, by this planning, our planning board, by the court, and by Fair Share Housing Center. Everybody has signed off on that plan. Now, our responsibility is by March fifteen to adopt ordinances that implement the plan. The ordinances are not to be designed to alter, change, go in a different direction, increase, decrease, density, or any other major factor of those ordinances. Last week, I, or maybe it was two weeks ago, my office prepared ordinances that were submitted to the borough and that were introduced and referred to the planning board. Those ordinances did not have the mixed use as a requirement in the, or, or as, they did not have the mixed use in the ordinance. I mistakenly, and I made an error, I take full responsibility for it. I made an error that those got past me and they were submitted without the mixed use, not recognizing that the mixed use is not an option that I have any authorization to delete that from the ordinance as I thought it was written in the Housing Element Fair Share Plan. It is not an option. It is in the plan. It is specifically highlight, well, I have it highlighted, but it's specifically for everybody in the public identified on page forty-six and forty-seven of the Fourth Round Housing Element Fair Share Plan. Specifically, just by page number, it's page fifty and fifty-one. But in my document on the page numbers, it's forty-six and forty-seven. It's not an option. It's a requirement, it's part of the plan. So, and there's language that goes on, on those same pages that specifically states the site can be, and I'm quoting, the site can be redeveloped as a mixed commercial residential project in which the residential component may be developed at a density of twenty-four units per acre with a twenty percent set aside, and so forth. There's numbers that support that, uh, support the mixed use. So, I made an error by releasing ordinances that did not have the mixed use. I corrected that, and I resubmitted ordinances to the council for introduction tonight and referral to the planning board. I'll be at the planning board meeting in, in person. I'll be at the subsequent, the next council meeting in person to answer any and all questions. But my responsibility to this borough is to prepare ordinances that are consistent with the Housing Element Fair Share Plan that the planning board voted on and approved June twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five. We have since had a consent order that's been signed off by our council and the Fair Share Housing Center that specifically says we have to adopt these ordinances by March fifteenth. And that's what we're doing tonight. I, I corrected an error that I made, and I also addressed, took that opportunity to address other concerns raised by the planning board and enacted those comments within those ordinances. But I do not have lun, any authorization from anybody to just delete something, because today we may not support it. When we did support it, June, June twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five, and it's in all of our documents since that date. So I'm not making anything up, I'm only trying to be consistent as I can so that these documents, when, after they are approved, the next step, we have to go through a certification, a compliance certification process, and I have to defend these ordinances versus our Housing Element Fair Share Plan, which has this language in there. So to say that I don't want it now, it's, that would make these ordinances inconsistent. And that would not, in, in my professional opinion, is not the avenue that we should be taking. And I apologize for the error. Number two, numbers. Our fourth round number is three hundred and twenty-nine. Twelve point five credits will be achieved through the CHOPI application once that application, which continues to go through the site plan application process. But that's another part of our consent order, ma, monitoring the court and Fair Share, monitoring the process of that application. That's still an ongoing site plan application matter. Besides that project, we have two zoning mechanisms in the plan, overlay C, overlay D. They produce, depending on you have the multifamily or the mixed use, they will produce either one hundred and seventy-seven or two hundred and thirteen credits. That's it. That's our plan. CHOPI application, overlay C, overlay D. That leaves a number of one hundred and thirty-nine point five or a hundred and three point five that has not been addressed in our plan. And we don't, we can't take credit for any of those other hypothetical mechanisms. There's a difference between a, a credit and a zoning mechanism. The plan is one hundred and three point five to one hundred and thirty-nine point five below the three hundred and twenty-nine number as far as credits are concerned, in accordance with the amended Fair Housing Act that we have to follow. We cannot take, I do identify in the plan ma, mandatory set-aside ordinance credits that we anticipate or, or could accomplish over a ten-year period. We have the number of sixty in there. That's a hypothetical number. On a hypothetical mandatory set-aside ordinance, and what that is, is, is anybody comes in with a project outside of our zoning mechanisms will collect twenty percent set aside. It's, it's a, it's a borough-wide ordinance that would collect any type of units outside of what's in our plan. I cannot, and we are not allowed, and you cannot count those as credits towards your number. So the sixty is in there just to identify as a mechanism, but you can't count that number. Number two, as spelled out in the amended Fair Housing Act, as spelled out in the consent order, and as spelled out in the Fair Share Housing Center Challenge Letter, you are not allowed to take credits for bonus credits for overlay areas. That's another seventy-nine point five credits right there that you are not allowed to use towards your three hundred and twenty-nine. So, between the seventy-nine point five and the sixty is a hundred and thirty-nine point five that has been incorrectly applied to our three hundred and twenty-nine number. We're not allowed to do that. And it's not me saying that, it's in the documents I just cited. So, I, I'm, I hope that clarifies those two main issues. And, uh, again, I, I will be at the planning board meeting in person. I'll be at the next council meeting in person to discuss these ordinances further. Thank you.
Do you have any questions of Mr. Mestretta? Members of the council? No? Okay, we can let Mr. Mestretta go.
Hey, Michael, I don't think there's any, um, any other further questions at this time from the members of the governing body, so if you wish to leave, that's, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Mayor, I can address the, um, the, uh, issue of the, um, retirement benefits if I could just, um, make a quick statement on that.
Thank you. So first, I just want to indicate that, um, there is an interest arbitration action that's being heard, um, this month. So that the issue will be decided on the contractual language.
Is your microphone on?
Yes, it is. I'll move it closer, I'm sorry. But the borough doesn't comment on personal retirement status of individual employees as those matters involve privacy and privacy considerations and are subject to review and approval by the state retirement system. The borough has reviewed applicable statutory provisions and relevant case law regarding chapter seventy-eight, uh, benefits regarding disability retirements. There is a distinction between service retirements and disability retirements, where a disability retirement is approved by the state, the chapter seventy-eight contributions do not apply. The borough is committed to administering retirement benefits in accordance with the law while respecting the privacy of employees. And, um, we continue to be ready to negotiate in, uh, good faith, and, um, we, uh, these are not matters which will be debated in public, um, at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next item is, uh, reintroduction, reintroduction of the ordinance. Ordinance number twenty, twenty-six dash zero five. I need a motion to read the reint, reintroduction.
This is the version of the ordinance with the, um, with the, uh, mixed use in the.
You, you gotta speak up, Bob. You're at the top of the mic and you have to state.
This is the version of the ordinance with the mixed use in the ordinance.
Uh, we need a motion, right?
Make a motion.
We need a second.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Liang, second by Councilman Patel.
The roll call, please.
No, no, uh, okay, roll call.
Yeah, this is the motion to read the introduction.
Read the introduction, yeah.
Yep, for Southern Sylvan Avenue Overlay Zone C and Affordable Housing Compliance. This is the version one, uh, the first version that includes mixed use. Uh, on roll call, Councilwoman Begats. This, this vote is to, uh, read the introduction, or rather, the reintroduction in first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-six dash zero five, the Southern Sylvan Avenue Overlay Zone C and Affordable Housing Compliance. This, in essence, is the ordinance that's version one that includes the mixed-use development. We have a motion on the table, uh, by Councilman Liang and a second from Councilman Patel. And now we're on roll call. On roll call. Councilwoman Begats. Uh, o, o, okay, Councilman Liang.
Yes.
Councilman Patel.
Yes.
Councilman Kapsakis.
Yes.
Councilman Lee.
Yes.
Councilman Katurbis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Begats?
Okay, the clerk will read.
The motion passes. Uh, and I'll just read, I'll read the ordinance into the record by title. Ordinance number twenty twenty-six dash zero five, ordinance to enact, uh, section thirty dash five point uh, one-nine Southern Sylvan Avenue Overlay Zone C in chapter thirty, uh, in parentheses, zoning of the code of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs to provide district regulations for an overlay zone and to address compliance with the borough's affordable housing obligations.
I need a motion. And the second.
Second.
So.
No, no, no.
There's a, no, he's doing a motion, I'll clarify. With the motion, uh, the, the mayor's requesting a motion to reintroduce and advertise ordinance number twenty twenty-six dash zero five for public hearing in accordance with the law. Motion by, uh, Councilman Liang, and the second was Councilman Patel, uh, on roll call. Councilwoman Begats?
Yes.
Councilman Liang?
Yes.
Councilman Patel?
Yes.
Councilman Kapsakis?
Yes.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Katurbis?
Yes.
Uh, the motion passes. The next item is, uh, ordinance number twenty twenty-six dash, dash, zero six. This is the Southern Sylvan Avenue Overlay Zone D and Affordable Housing Compliance. Uh, need a motion in second to reintroduce and, uh, conduct the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-six dash zero six. This is the diversion, once again, with mixed-use development, the version one. Um, uh, can I have a motion on behalf of the mayor, motion and a second?
Any more motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Patel, second.
Who's the second?
Second by Councilman Liang. On roll call. Councilwoman Begats?
Yes.
Councilman Liang?
Yes.
Councilman Patel?
Yes.
Councilman Kapsakis?
Yes.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Katurbis?
Yes.
The motion passes. Now, now I will read, uh, ordinance number twenty twenty-six dash zero six into the record. Once again, this is version one, the, the, the version with the mixed use in it. Ordinance number twenty twenty-six dash zero six and ordinance to enact section thirty dash five point twenty, Southern Sylvan Avenue Overlay Zone D in chapter thirty, zoning of the, of the code of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs to provide district regulations for an overlay zone and to address compliance with the borough's affordable housing obligations. Um, at this time, we need a motion in second to re, reintroduce and advertise ordinance number twenty twenty-six dash zero six for public hearing in accordance with the law.
We need a motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Liang, second by Councilman Patel, on roll call, Councilwoman Begats?
Yes.
Councilman Liang?
Yes.
Councilman Patel?
Yes.
Councilman Kapsakis?
Yes.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Katurbis?
Yes.
Mayor, the motion passes. Uh, we already did executive session. No older, new, old, no older, new business.
No, 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 which is right. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Mayor, motion second to adjourn.
Oh, I need a motion. To adjourn, okay.
Motion by Councilman Liang, second by Councilman Kapsakis, on roll call, Councilwoman Begats? Councilman Liang? Councilman Patel?
Yes.
Councilman Kapsakis?
Yes.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Katurbis? Mayor, the motion passes.
Okay.
Uh, meeting adjourned at nine thirty-three P, PM. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.